The October 27th meeting to order at 7:03 and if we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Um, we could move the H1 and H2 for board action. If anybody would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second, any discussion on that? Okay, we will take a vote. All those in favor can say aye and opposed can say nay or you can abstain. So we will move the H1 and H2 as K2 and K3. So we will vote. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we will be moving H1 and H2 as K2 and K3. Okay, let's move on to the approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the October 13th and October 20th.
There should be approved minutes. Tony, your second.
Okay, discussion. On the October 13th meeting, we just have to say that I was not the one to call the meeting to order that this board was. But as long as that changes, I didn't have anything else. Any other members have anything to say about the minutes? Okay, so we will vote to approve one, as is with the amendment of board being added instead of me. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so minutes are approved as is with that correction. Let's move on to public participation, which we do not have any in this room. So, if you would like to, on the virtual room, raise your hand to state your name and your address and we are giving two minutes to discuss what you would like. And Dr. Willett will put the timer on the screen and we can go from there.
Yeah.
So you just have to raise your hand and order me to call by. We want. Going twice. We do not see anybody at this time. Therefore, we will close the public participation. Okay, let's move on to correspondence. Tony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board received an email disappointed that the DC trip was going forward with the exclusion of students that are not vaccinated. An email asking for the logic behind only testing select students for upcoming events. An email stating that the decision to exclude non-vaccinated students was shameful. An email expressing disappointment in the COVID requirements of the upcoming seventh and eighth grade activities. Email expressing concern with children having to show vaccination statuses to attend school function. An email thanking the board for their advocacy and reminding us that these kids will still miss the benefits of a trip as a new class. An email asking why previous emails had received no responses. And finally, an email from Town Council Republican Caucus concerning a political cartoon taught by the school requesting the board to investigate each.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we will go to points of information. I'll open up to any board members who would like to have a say and we don't have anyone virtual, so you can actually raise your hand. Tony?
Okay.
Uh, so just briefly, I had the pleasure today of attending a K legal issues workshop. We'll take a moment, let Miss Plur giggle at Michael Lee and going to that. But it is appropriate. One of the things that I will do for the board is I'll type up my notes with some interesting talking points to share with everybody. But one of the presentations was called Speak No Evil, The Legal Contours of Board Members' Members' Speech. And the presenter went specifically into different ways of maintaining that balance. You know, when do we talk as an individual versus as a board member? How does that cross into legal issues? And he specifically listed a series of policy recommendations that could help with it. So part of those notes, there are ones like a policy specifically on a process for how the public lodges complaints or concerns with the board. How do they do that anonymously? One on confidential information, one on the use of the special committees and how those can be appropriate. As well as a policy on public statements and how those can be used. But it was an interesting conference and I'm very excited. I can't wait to discuss those, but more importantly, to use some of these things that I learned in here to help us go forward and deal with some of the issues that I think we'll face.
That's excellent. I can't wait to read them. I mean, I want that stuff too. Sounds awesome. Perfect. Um, any other board members at this time?
I just wanted to respond to the email that we got from the town council members regarding the political cartoon and hopeful that there is, you know, looking into going on and that there will be a response brought back to the board and/or the curriculum committee around what went on there.
Yeah, I do believe that what is happening in the testing situation currently, so we shall wait for that to.
Next, I too wanted to address of the town council. It wasn't from the town council, it was from a few members of the town council. Um, I think it's important to know that the board can't possibly know everything that's involved in the schools. Uh, I think because Dr. Willett is taking a look at it, um, you know, we're going through the proper avenues. Uh, I think it's important that as board members were open to the conversation and open to talking about it in curriculum, whether you agree with it or not. And I'll just leave it at that. But I think that that's pretty much why we established the curriculum committee as a board was to understand what's being taught in the schools at the board level. That's it. Thank you.
Um, just, I just wanted to touch base, uh, you know, and listening to what everybody's saying and absolutely agreeing. Uh, and while the curriculum aspect itself is certainly concerning, I'm interested in the secondary issue. You know, seeing how online, on open discussion and various other ways, that conversation blew up rather than the communication happened here. And the fact that, you know, Dr. Willett and the board may have been looking at certain things, but that communication back and forth with the, uh, with the public didn't happen. And how can we adjust the policies and the procedures and the things that we've got internal such that Facebook is not our primary means of getting information in? Is how do we do that? So I think we've got work to do and excited to do.
Hi, Dr. Willett. I don't know if you wanted to address anything from that perspective.
Um, I, I, well, to, to, to that, um, to Tony, if I could probably use your person there. So Tony's point of, um, or end, you know, today we did, uh, there was a community forum, superintendent's community forum scheduled. Um, and it's in the newsletters, would have been, you know, is a great place for people to come if they have questions and so on. And it's in the newsletters, it's listed and I did not get too many people coming. So again, analyzing, you know, how to get people to the table, because if they're, you know, obviously many things will come up in the field of education. Then, you know, as Mr. Holt said, you know, having an option or opportunity for people to be able to come ask questions, you know, express feelings is important. And so there are a couple of mechanisms for that, but I don't, I'm not sure what. Today we had one and I thought, hey, this would be a great opportunity. Some people may come, but you know, not too many people can. So I, I did it with the people that were there. Everybody was, uh, so there, you know, to, to determine in new ways of making sure that we have the opportunity to interact, I think is an exciting opportunity for us.
I think that brings up a part of the communications committee too of how we interact and over, you know, I think everything are pieces of a puzzle, but we just gotta put it together, you know?
Policy one down.
Jacob?
Yeah, just to touch on this topic one more time. I agree, I think with regards to the issue that the town council or Republican caucus brought up. Um, that I think the first steps, which is having Dr. Will investigate it, um, are appropriate. And I look forward to discussing it more at the committee level once we get some more information about that to figure out what steps need to be taken and get more details about the specifics of that situation. So assuming that people of Tolland are gracious enough to ever term me for another term, I'm looking forward to doing that.
Any other members have anything? I'll just quickly say, I think this is actually a perfect example of why the curriculum committee was so important. And I'm glad that, you know, that we did put this together and go forward with it. And like Tony was saying with Christina, with the communications committee, I think this is really a good, you know, place for both of these committees to really kind of dig in and do some work for both of these issues. So, thank you.
I, okay, all right, right now. I, I will just say, I, I wanted to thank Lou for actually reaching out to us like through the proper channel as opposed to, you know, taking it out on social media where, you know, board doesn't have a chance to defend themselves, you know, or, you know. So I, I appreciate him doing that and doing it the right way, you know?
And I was just gonna say, I appreciate you, Dr. Willett, because I actually found out from you first, which was great, because I, I kind of had the background information. So your quick response to us was definitely appreciated by me.
Yeah. I think we're all set. Go on to go. Well, Dr. Willett, do you have anything else?
Not unless you want me to.
So you almost look like you're gonna say something and then you're like, yeah, I'm not going to say it, so. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to our student representatives report. So we have Nadia and Emily. Welcome, ladies.
So, yeah. So this week was, is spirit week and I'm not gonna name all the days, but, you know, it's really, and then, um, pep rally. So our pep rally, we're not, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be all together. It's, one of the students is just gonna be filming a video of all the different sports teams and clubs and putting it together. Then there's a tailgating, which is gonna be held in the parking lot and in the sports field and they're selling a bunch of different types of food. Then the homecoming dances on a Saturday night and it's in four different locations and stuff. And then another upcoming event is November 1st is we're gonna be preparing, preparing the yearly food drive. So, yeah. Thank you. I think that's, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Perfect. Well, thank you, ladies, for that. Um, we talked about the pep rally. We can't do anything in person, Dr. Willett. We've got to do virtual pep rally? I mean, you can't get that excited on a virtual pep rally.
Yeah, right.
Thumbs up over there. What was that?
You can find out some information about that.
Yeah, that would be great, because that just seems so.
Not happy.
Yeah.
What are the students saying about it? Are they disappointed or?
Students want to do it outside, like on the bleachers or something. Um, but I don't know.
Ready.
Yeah, we just heard it was either gonna be outside or virtual and I think they're leaning towards virtual.
The students are leaning towards outside?
Yes. The students really want a pep rally?
Well, I don't know that this week would be, you know, agreed for outside. But, you know, I think that a pep rally should be something fun, exciting. Dr. Willett writing notes about the outside bleachers. Once again, thank you very much, ladies. So let's move on to the superintendent's report and we have recognition of the BOE members and contributors. I just wanted to have this opportunity basically to say thank you to everyone for working together and coming. And all of the, the virtual and in-person, whether it was special sessions, regular sessions or the executive session, it's been a very big pleasure having everybody and doing this. I mean, it's definitely, it's a lot of work and I don't think people will understand the work that goes into being a board member. And so I think that it was important to, I mean, obviously you're not running again, so this is your farewell. So now you can go run and get a cupcake really fast. But, um, once again, I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you to everyone for their work. I mean, this is definitely the most recording job that we've ever had, I would just wanna say. But it is a lot of work and I think it's really important to recognize that that's what goes into it. Um, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Dr. Willett?
Just that, uh, you know, being a elected representative today is not an easy task. It's, it's, uh, not a compensated position in Tolland. And, um, you know, so the, the contributions that you make are nothing short of, you know, heroic in many ways, because you, you're facing off against a culture that's kind of unforgiving sometimes. So thank you for all of the hard work you do and everything you do. Um, you know, I deeply appreciate you. I know that the owl deeply appreciates you. And everything behind the owl deeply appreciates yourself. You know, thank you for all that you do.
Um, I just actually wanted to thank you and Christina as well. This has been certainly a challenging two years, but I appreciate all of your leadership. And while I certainly do hope that I am back in two weeks, you know, but if this happens to be my last opportunity, I just wanted to publicly thank you both for, for all the work that you've done. And everybody else too, you know, I don't know, you don't know exactly what's gonna happen, so, but, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you. And, um, no matter what happens, I hope we can continue all the, the good work that we've been doing the past couple of years. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willett, too, for being so accommodating and answering all a million questions and, you know, all that too. F1. You're gonna, you're gonna always love F1, you know, Dr. Willett, no matter what happens. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the committee and liaison reports. Who would like to go first?
Tony? Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so policy made today. And, uh, you know, much like your previous statement just a few minutes ago, we, we started out by, you know, me offering my sincere appreciation to the committee. Particularly with new stepping in, uh, kind of in the middle as he did and being just an absolute source of good communication and debate.
Oh, I appreciate you saying that.
I appreciate you and Christine, Christina jumping in and always, uh, the, the conversations and the work that went on behind the scenes, the each of the policies we brought up was exciting. Some of the conversations, you could tell that we came from different perspectives and the debates and conversations that we had, you know, I grew. And I grew from each and every one of those. Poor Dr. Willett over there and the work he has to do to get ready for those conversations that hurt. There are many a times, I'm certain his notes have profanity towards me, but in the end. You know, we put out, uh, we brought upwards of 25, 26 policies to the, for the board here. Because the, the three of us recognize the importance of the work and I think it showed in each of those meetings. So again, thank you to you. We then moved on and discussed policy 5302, uh, which is the homeless students. Our goal was to work on a policy that we could, that was important, that needed to be done, uh, but that we could complete. So that, you know, the, the next policy committee coming in could kind of set up their, the direction they wanted to go with that. Uh, Dr. Willett found this one and we agreed that this was important. This is critical and something that needed to be adjusted. So we did. And that'll be waiting in the queue for next time we bring one up.
Perfect. Um, want to do FFC?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm prepared. I'm just looking for it on my phone here, uh, my minutes that I did submit timely. Um, we, we went through just our final end of the year questions. Um, we, we talked about having, you know, some more dollar amounts, you know, and a narrative for any overages to kind of also be in line with the updates we've made to 3010. We, um, went through the, um, September 30th numbers and Dr. Willett, you know, walked us through anything that kind of had some overages already and, and the reasoning behind that. And then we also talked briefly about the COVID relief fund joint meeting that is still needs to be scheduled. And we are still planning on preparing some kind of a summary to that, um, to present to the council when that does come about. And I think, Dr. Willett, correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest need right now would probably be for associate educators. And that's what we would probably be focusing on if we get approval for the COVID relief fund, so.
Um, did you guys have mental health?
We did. There was one, but I missed most of it because I was at the volleyball game.
Well, then.
I missed it as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, um.
There is one, um, the first.
Correct.
Okay. Dana usually does our first row, just that there's any loose ends. So is there anyone else missing? Cause did you guys have?
No, but I just wanted to say, we, we canceled communication and I think one of the reasons we did is that we recognized that with communications committee, we want to bring everybody back to the core of meetings, like get the information into the board as opposed to out on social media. Uh, and we thought that that was probably best discussed with Dr. Willett on the next communications committee and after the election. And maybe we'll be lucky enough to be co-chairs again, but.
That's not good news.
But that's why we canceled it.
Okay, well, that makes sense because we did cancel a few because after the election, we weren't sure what the makeup of committees are gonna be, things of that nature. So that makes sense, but you guys are still on. The three of us are still on, so. Whatever happens, we're still here, so. Um, so at this time though, I'm not forgetting anyone else, so I think I have everyone. Okay, chairperson report, I didn't print it up, but I have that. I just wanted to say, uh, these past two years as chair have been, have been the toughest but most rewarding volunteering experience. I appreciate the opportunity to have led the board of ed through some of the most difficult times that it ever had to face. Uh, never did I imagine that a pandemic would be one of the biggest hurdles to overcome. The board started out on shaky ground, but a foundation was eventually formed. However, rules were followed and our meetings have been efficient. Everyone's voices are heard without individuals interrupting, interrupting their time. Through our discussion, many important decisions were made, which I'm happy to report, most of them were unanimous votes. So, I look forward to continuing on the momentum that this board has created. I wish everyone on here could continue another two years to complete some of these goals that we have started. The pandemic is not quite in the rearview area. We still need to ensure that the learning loss can be recovered through budget items, including but not limited to interventionalist programs and the basic building blocks of education. So thank you very much for trusting me as chair for these times. I wish everyone good luck in the election and everybody needs to go out and vote. You're over 18. So let's make sure that happens. And so now with that, we will move on to the board action of K1, policy 3010.
All right, so, um, oh, okay. Is that the one first rather than obsolete?
Yeah, because we, I moved the other two for K2 and then K3.
Okay, good. So, um, policy 3010, as you may recall, there were some minor adjustments being made to the last one. This one essentially making, I'm trying to scroll so the public can see it too. Um, basically making sure that the months we're aligning that that June, June financial report may be reported in September. I'm codifying that in the language and, uh, Mr. Holt.
Sorry, that didn't even derive. Uh, I got an email that said we forgot May.
You forgot who?
May. And the period's covered.
Well, it submitted in the margin.
It should be with after April, I think, right?
Yeah.
You can approve this with the addition of May.
I guess I just probably wrote it and what do you call it, cross the May? You look at twice.
There just aren't that many more months for us to miss at this point. At this point, I think we've nailed them all.
So, I'll move to approve the updates to policy 3010, board budget procedures and line item transfers as documented in the superintendent's agenda. Item K1 for the October 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting with the amendment that under period covered the last line that the month of May is added. So it reads March, April and May.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm just realizing if we want March, April and May, the submitted month of May, what is it gonna work? Cause May won't be over, so that's gotta change, I think, to June.
Yeah, can we put May on the first one, May-June and then have it in September?
Well, if you look at, if you look at how it's designed here, if you look at it, and I'm not, you know, contrarian, but January, February reported in March. March, April, reported in May. And, you know, you'd have to do May, June reported, you know, or May reported in June. You know what I'm saying? So there is a sequence to that. If we would just add May reported in June, I understand that to be what you meant by that.
Okay.
Is that right?
I guess that's okay. I always think of June as like the all encompassing year end. So talking about just the month of May with the whole year end, but I don't, I don't feel if it matters. I mean, I think, like you said, Dr. Will, we're still gonna kind of stick to the, we're gonna talk about it every month. This is just kind of under policy that we have to talk about it by.
At least by these times, yeah. And, and then, you know, and my perception of how you wanted it covered there is the, or May reported in June. Now I'll add that.
That's right.
Okay, but now we have a motion about adding it to March, April and May for the May, so we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Still have the votes to rescind them.
I mean, you could do March, April, come May, reported in June, just get. So adding May, I'm still adding May and reporting it in June.
Yeah, just move instead of submitted in May, it says submitted in June, move from March, April, May and then put June instead of May.
Jacob just amend, amend his motion.
It's been seconded.
Yeah, we spent second in some discussion, so we have to.
Yeah, he can rescind that.
If we vote, we have to rescind that. So, um, all, well, someone has to make a motion to rescind.
I moved to rescind my motion, so, yeah.
Yeah. Any discussion about rescinding? Okay, now let's go ahead and do, um, a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so we will rescind that motion. So now we can do a correct motion. Just to be clear.
So we're adding May and then we're just moving the submitted month of June, is that?
Okay.
So I moved to approve the updates to policy 3010, board budget procedures and line item transfers as documented in the superintendent's agenda. Item K1 for the October 27th Board of Education meeting with the amendment that under period covered the last line. I will read March, April and May and under submitted on the last line, instead of May, we'll say June.
Second. Any discussions or the discussion on that? Okay, um, let's go ahead and do a vote. All in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously for the 3010. Let's go ahead and move on to the obsolete and surplus question.
So, uh, since these come occasionally to the board, essentially it's following the process, administration requests, you know, on occasion, the Board of Education declare, declare certain items obsolete. And then we turn these items over to the town council in accordance to the Board of Education 3040, disposal of obsolete and surplus equipment and materials. In this case, if you look through it, um, there's a series of items here and some of these, you know, I can't really speak too much to. The DPX Genesis plate maker has been determined to be obsolete and unneeded by the system. The drill presses and table saws are usually, um, you know, there's a narrative here about them. Usually what tends to happen is, um, they, uh, you know, they, they have, you know, ones that are working better and the, these are getting old, so they turn over to the town. The town can sometimes turn these over and sell, or they can be surplus in some way. Sometimes they want all of them, you know, to have the same drill bits and they're updating stuff and that's just a much, you know, more efficient machine, et cetera. You know, other things here like the joiner, you'll see those descriptions about as to why they are making a surplus, a metal lathe. You know, students use them to, to shape the metal. The tool is not part of the curriculum anymore in the middle school, so it can be given to the town and the town might have the use for it. it can be given to the town, and the town might have to use for a metal lathe. A bandsaw from Sears. For those of you who remember, the Sears used to be a store. Catalog. Uh, and so some of these things are old, and they're, they're craftsman and stuff, but you didn't hold up so well. So, um, you know, that needed to be surplus. I don't, uh, the kilns generally do have a lifespan. So when the kiln starts to short out and things are not working particularly well, they, they will surplus that or send it to be surplus, that type of thing. Some of these can be resold, some of them can't. And so that ends up being, you know, a process plays out to see what has value and can still be utilized by the town or resold by the town. And if it can, it usually is. Um, and what can't be, um, they have a process for, um, getting rid of it. So, this, this is the step where the town, uh, the school turns these items over. And, uh, this is brought to the board for you to be able to, you know, to okay that, essentially.
At this time, I'll intervene a motion to declare the item was obsolete, turn the items over to the town. So. Any other discussion with this? Nobody's jumping at these Sears bandsaw.
I worked at Sears as my first job.
Okay, we will do a vote. So anyone, um, sorry, I just think about Sears now, because now it's a Halloween store over at the Buckland Hills. Um, so, so, I don't know. Go down this. I am, anyone, and then. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimously. Um, these can go to the town now. I just, I'm thinking about the Halloween store. That's a whole other story. Sears is on, the craftsman is at Lowe's, just in case you want.
That's bought out, huh?
It was bought out. It's all these thoughts that are going in my head instead of.
I didn't realize it was a Halloween store now. That's sad. But now I'm kind of excited to get it on Halloween.
It's just downstairs and then shut off the, uh, but it's not that exciting. Okay, let's move on to. Everything is taped for her, and she records everything multiple ways. So I believe that we can continue on.
Okay.
So. The possible cancellation for the December twenty-second meeting.
This is a possible cancellation of the seven twenty-second. Um, it is the closest, it is the, you know, one that is close to the, the school holiday. So, um, sometimes the board will consider doing that. Um, I, I will not be around for this meeting. So if you do go, you will persevere without me on this one. But it's up to you. If I did come remotely, I mean, at all.
I almost wanna have it.
Okay, so I will intervene a motion to cancel the December twenty-second meeting.
I'll move to cancel the December twenty-second, uh, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Board of Education.
Any discussion on this?
Sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Um, I was just, I was wondering if it might be better to postpone this vote to the next.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Yeah.
If canceling that might be best for that next board.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I was gonna stay, cause like, I wouldn't feel right making a decision for another board, you know.
But the, um, fact of the matter is, sorry, nothing will change with Dr. Willard, and he will not be available. And, um, seeing that he sets up everything, so I'd rather have him know that it is, um, situated and you're not having a meeting that night.
I guess the next board could always add.
They could always add another meeting, but this is, there is a seventeenth meeting in December is what we, like the seventeenth, we discussed that. But the, um, the twenty-second is one that's like to cancel. Yeah. So. Um, at this, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one of the things I found was coming in, you know, right after November, is that there was never any time to have like a board retriever or, like, coming together. And that might be a good opportunity. Uh, and I had thought like the same thing, not making a decision for the next board, but, um, I know.
Would be something.
Yes. And I just figured for the actual, it's one thing if we have a retreat, which I think we need to do anyways. I think that would be fantastic. We never actually got one. When you guys came on board, and I think that would be fantastic to do. And I think having a virtual one is not the same as in person. And so if we could take that opportunity, they have an in-person, I think that we should certainly do it. But this doesn't change the fact that the twenty-second meeting is that he's not be available. So. Um, we could do a roll call vote so that Lisa knows exactly where everybody stands on this. So, um, Jacob?
I, I will stand.
Aye, 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 aye.
Yeah.
And I'm a aye as well, therefore this still passes. The December twenty-second meeting is canceled. Okay. And we are now up to our second public participation. If you could, please state your name and your address for the record. And if these comments could be contained to the items on this agenda, if you could, please raise your hand. I will call on you, and you will be given two minutes. The timer is going to be on the screen any minute. So I invite people to raise their hands. I'm going once. Going twice. Okay, we will close the public participation. And we can move on to the points of information again, and I will open this up to board members. We do?
So as the only person for here, uh, for sure not coming back, I just wanted to say, uh, I appreciate the community giving me the opportunity to serve. To those that wrote into the board, um, I appreciate your engagement. Uh, to those that may have shared my opinions, you know, I appreciate your support. To those that didn't share my opinions, I appreciate the civility with which we were able to have conversations, and I appreciate the opportunity you gave me to share my thought process and how I came to my opinion. Um, to the rest of the board, I appreciate you guys welcoming, uh, Sophia and I in, um, you know, halfway through. It was, you know, it was challenging to say the best, but, you know, you know, but I, I appreciate you doing that. Um, I don't think in this entire session, we had a single vote fall on party lines. Like, and I think in today's day and age, I think that really says something. So it's been really a pleasure working with all of you. Um, Dr. Willard, I appreciate you being available to me for all of my rookie questions and answering them with the patience of a saint. So I appreciate all of that. Um, so to everyone, just thank you and give up to you all.
Thank you.
It's kind of sad that this is, you know, and I feel like we finally got to a really good place to like get everything going. Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, I, I do said something that really struck. And I want to thank, uh, Dr. Willard for, you know, as you may suspect, I enjoy policies. Uh, and, and so there's almost bi-weekly meetings and emails with Dr. Willard about some concept that is not directly in the policy, but is a couple of steps beyond. Uh, and, and so thank you for, for helping me grow in the trade that we've done. Uh, I also want to thank, and I, I see some of the names on the screen, uh, some of the, the parents that absolutely, uh, were passionate in, in their emails. And I've had back and forth email communication with, with a number of the community members that, like I said, discussing the topic. And, uh, while we may not have agreed, there was respectful debate, and, and that was, that was enjoyable and appreciated. So, so thank you to everybody that took that time and, and wrote or text or called. I appreciate it.
What else? Points of information that is open? Like crickets. Hey, everyone.
You want to get up before eight?
Okay, at this point, um, we don't really have future in business, but let's go ahead and I will intervene a motion for adjournment.
Um, if you're ready to tell, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I appreciate you giving that.
Yeah, all in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously.